Monday, June 2nd. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with clarity and justice for all.
And at this time, we're going to square in our newest member of council.
On the other side.
On the other side?
Yep.
Okay. Do you have a copy of anything?
No, I just want to be able to pick it up on the microphone.
Okay. At the May 19th, 2014 city council meeting, Tyler Avens was appointed to serve on Minutrista City Council through December 31st, 2014. Mr. Avens, please raise your right hand and repeat these words after me to affirm your oath of office. I, Tyler Avens.
I, Tyler Avens.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully the duties of the office of council member of the City of Minutrista, Minnesota. And to discharge faithfully.
And to discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of council member.
Of council member.
Of the City of Minutrista, Minnesota.
Of the City of Minutrista, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations. Please join us. Thank you. I'm Mayor Ann Hunt. To my left is council member Mark Vanderlinde, council member Arlene Donahue, council member Bob Christians, our newest member, council member Tyler Avens, and our city engineer, Paul. On our right is Michael Barone, our interim city administrator, our David, no, Brian Graham, our finance director, David Abel, our community development director, Ron Beatty, our city attorney, and Paul Falls, our head of public safety, and then that's Terry Harsted, our city clerk.
See ya.
At this point, I'd like to approve the agenda. I'd like to suggest that we move, remove the meeting minutes from May 5th and May 19th, both the regular and special, regular, I think they need a little more work. And there's quite a few changes. I'd also like to make a correction to, under business items, it's not really business items, where do you put it when you correct the record from a previous meeting that's not in the minutes?
Good question.
Should we put it under administrative items?
Sure.
Okay.
That's fine.
So, do that. And so we'll put that as number D. Okay? Any other changes to the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the following changes.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's five oh. Okay. Next is persons to be heard, and we have quite a few people, so we are going to try to keep it to the three-minute limit. Mark Vanderlinde is going to time for me and wave me down to make sure that we move on quickly and get to all of our issues on the agenda today. So let's start with Tracy Anderson.
Mayor and council, Tracy Anderson, 9200 County Road 26. I've lived in this community for 40 years, and it's been great. I've always said that the best part about Mound, which includes Minutrista and Orno to me, is that you never get lost in the crowd, and the worst part about this area is that you never get lost in the crowd. It kind of depends on your personal behavior as to how you feel about the small-town scrutiny that is being placed upon you. Mayor and city council, you are now under such scrutiny. Over open-meeting violations, questionable city firings, employee harassment, rude behavior to citizens, lack of transparency, refusal to speak to the media, the potential of awarding contracts to your friends' companies, just to name a few. Yet, all the claims that, on questioning you, is being called as harassment. Back in the day, my mother would have said to me, "Maybe you need a long look in the mirror as to why all of this is happening to you." She was a wise woman. For the last 10-plus years, I have been witness to a group of local citizens that are shameless in their attacks on anything or anyone that does not follow their ideals. The City of Mound, Minutrista, the school districts of Orno and Mound Westonka, the fire departments, the police department, have all been subject to their tactics, personal attacks, and what I would call terrorism, intimidation, and full-on harassment. Some of you are members of this group, and you are supporters of this group, and all of you, every single one, with your exception of Mr. Avens now, were elected from support and finances from this group. Per public data, we know that the members of this group are in direct email communication with you. They are affiliated with the companies positioning themselves to acquire millions in taxpayer dollars for water contracts. This seems to be a direct conflict of interest, however, you seem to be blind to that idea. It also appears that the citizens' group has been advising the council. Rather than the council consulting with the educated and trained city staff that we, the taxpayers, pay for, you are going outside. In my mind, this council is absolutely guilty for poor form, and these allegations may be found to be so serious that forced removal from office is the final answer for some or all of you. Mayor, you also stated last meeting, "When you treat us disrespectfully, you treat the citizens of Minutrista disrespectfully." You and the council's affiliation with the citizens' group, your lack of respect for open-meeting laws, your hostility and lack of trust, you and the council show the city, staff, as well as allegations you are facing, wow, I would say that is very disrespectful to the citizens of Minutrista. Your friends and associates may not have to follow official rules, but I will be damned if this council will allow their vendettas and tactics to be carried out within the chambers of this building. Mayor, I am glad you apologized to Mr. Gale last meeting. As for the rest of the emails and comments that are now on public record and made against the other good people that served or are currently serving in the city, I guess they'll have to wait for theirs. If the mayor and council are feeling harassed and disrespected because of their questionable interactions, then per my mother's advice, I have just a second.
No.
Per my mother's advice, maybe it was on your campaign policies that you would not limit.
You're out of order. You said we're going to do three minutes.
I would suggest you teach your friends to play fair and not dirty.
We're asking you to sit down. Okay, Mr. Groat? And anybody who behaves in a disorderly manner will be asked to leave the council chambers. This is not a sporting event.
My name is Ron, excuse me, Ron Groat. I'm a resident of Minutrista, and I live at 3850 Enchanted Lane. And I simply wanted to bring to the attention of the council, the mayor, and the staff the flooding problem, which you're probably aware of, and talk about it from both a short-term and long-term issue, and put the best minds to it to not only come up with some solutions for it, but also some funding, obviously. I'm one of about eight houses currently that are affected with about a foot of water on the roadway, and your Public Works, I think, folks, and maybe the engineer was out recently. And it's not only a inconvenience, but potholes are developing, and I just, I had a $500 morning today when I popped two tires on my car, but that's my problem. At any rate, the short-term issue is that we have a flood, and we have a foot of water on the back, on the road. It's filling with potholes. There's 100 homes beyond us in both Minutrista and Shorewood, and so you probably have traffic, I'm just guessing, at about 200 to 400 cars a day passing on the roadway, and 99% of people are respectful, and they limit their driving speed and so forth, but not everybody. And I basically have the water about, oh, five feet from my house. My neighbors, they have the water into their garage, et cetera. So we have a short-term problem that, let's see what we can do with that. The longer-term problem is I've been there 25 years, and it used to happen about once a decade, we'd get a big rain, and a series of rains, and the roadway would be covered and so forth. It's now been almost every year, and it becomes, so there's, the road's really old, and needs to be repaired or replaced at some point in time. But when that happens, obviously, it would be nice to have a solution to keep the lake out of the road for everyone's safety. Enchanted Island, as you know, is a small but significant part of the community, and it's filled with walkers and bikers and dogs and kids and all that stuff, and they can't use the road safely in the condition that it is right now. So that was my purpose tonight, bring it to your attention, short-term and long-term, and I'm glad to be involved. I think you have my contact numbers, and I'm glad to work with my neighbors, and I'm glad to work with funding options and whatever we need to do.
We are aware of it, and we are going to talk about it later under staff reports. Paul's going to give us an update on what's going on out there, because we're well aware of the situation.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Cindy Notch.
Hello, my name is Cindy Notch. I live on Morningview Drive. I want to talk about the water issue, and I want to continue to encourage the council to check out, to do your homework, and I applaud you on doing the value engineering. I think sometimes we forget that in the past, we did crazy things in our environment. We used to always spray waste oil on gravel roads. We had the Nike missile site. We don't know what percolated into the aquifer from there. We have the Tonka Toy hazardous waste. I can't remember what the project was called, but it's on the PCA list of things to, you know, to mitigate, and it hasn't been done yet. So all of that drips into our aquifer. We have well 2A that, you know, we spent probably half a million dollars on it, and we can't really use it, because the water in there does not meet a lot of EPA standards without being diluted with others. And of course, the older we get, approaching, you know, the 60 mark is always, the physician says, "You have well water. Have you had it tested?" And so when this argument, or when this topic came up, I do have well water, and I did have it tested, and I also tested the well water at a rental we own out in the City of Independence. And I was shocked when I got the results back from angle water testing, that the arsenic on my Minutrista well is about three times as high as my arsenic on my well out in the City of Independence. And I thought, that really surprised me, and I was, it's underneath the EPA level, but not a lot. So we do have some issues, and I do hope to hook up to clean Minutrista water whenever it happens. I'm not hooked up now. It's in the street. So I encourage you to shop carefully, and I know you will, and I encourage you to review the bids. Also, I wanted to talk about civility in government, and clearly, we live, thank God, in a democracy, and clearly, there are people campaigning for the fall of 2014, and that's great, because that's what a democracy is for. However, in my last, I never was politically active in the first 50 years of my life, but in the last eight or so, been a little more so. But one of the things, as an old computer programmer, we always had to do what we call data testing. And data testing was, you went back to the facts of the raw data, and you tested to see if you had the correct results. And that's what I would encourage everyone who wants to be politically active, is to go back to facts. So I received a flyer for a campaign meeting at the Lafayette Club on Wednesday, and it says that Ann Hunt unilaterally ordered a value engineering study. But the meeting minutes-
I'm sorry, Cindy, I have to stop here. We're past three minutes.
Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you. Anyway, everyone, let's be civil. Let's stick to the issues. Let's go to the facts.
Sorry. Okay, Andrea Felmoody.
I live at 1260 Morningview Drive. I'm a 29-year resident of Minutrista and have been on city water for 29 years. I've been in the environmental health and safety field for over 30 years. I am requesting that a public meeting be held so that WSB can present their original proposal to all interested and concerned residents. This could be done at the public meeting, or informational meeting that we are planning to have in a few weeks. We would like them to discuss their phased-in approach versus the full 2030 build-out approach, and what the costs and benefits are of each approach. We also want to hear from them whether or not RO is needed or warranted, and how much that will add to the cost of the treatment plant for both the phased-in versus the full build-out for 2030. We also would like them to discuss what the benefits are of a central plant versus several, more dispersed, several locations. Is it just a cost benefit, or is there an advantage to have access to more than one aquifer? We need this information firsthand from WSB, and we need to be allowed to ask questions of both WSB and the city staff that would be involved with this project. You will be requiring 1,100 households that use city water to pay the bill for this project that is estimated to be between $21 to $32 million if Bolton &amp; Mink gets the project to do, and their approach is to do the full 2030 build-out, versus the $8.6 million if WSB does the project using a phased-in approach, which would cover costs for the next five years. Both city staff and the city engineer, WSB, have recommended a phased-in approach. Why should 1,100 people be paying the cost to build out to 2030, where, and our city finance director said that we have no, we don't have any idea what the population's going to be. You can't predict out that far. Hunter's Crest was built 12 years ago. They still have 100 houses that are yet to be built in that development. So it makes no sense to have us pay the cost of something built out to 2030. By then, there'll be new technologies, there may be better treatment systems than reverse osmosis. So I really encourage you to put the phased-in approach back in the, into the proposals, and give us the information on that at the city meeting. If you don't, or at the informational meeting. If you don't, you're slanting the information to the way that you folks want it, not to the way the residents want to see it. We want all the options on the table so that we can make an informed decision. I also have expressed my concerns in past council meetings about the wastefulness of RO treatment. I'm not against RO treatment. I think it's a good treatment process for, if you have contaminants that do need to be removed, that can't be removed by gravity filtration, but the contaminants that are of concern in Minutrista's water can be adequately removed with just the gravity filtration. The RO, as I stated in a past meeting, less than 1% of the water that an individual uses is used for drinking water purposes, which means 99% of that expensive RO water is used for non-drinking water purposes, and will be flushed down our toilets, used to wash clothes, and used to water the lawns. The City of Minutrista uses 160 million gallons of water per year, and that includes 10 million gallons per year that is used to flush fire hydrants. Do we really want to be flushing fire hydrants with reverse osmosis water? These numbers are based on the annual Minnesota DNR report that the state provides to the city each year, so I did not make up those numbers.
Thank you.
So I encourage you to be responsible.
Thank you, Ms. Moody. It's over three minutes.
Save our, I really hope you folks start listening to us, because I've lived here 29 years. I've been on city water.
Thank you.
I know how to assess the hazards, and you're just making a sham of this, really. Please give us the opportunity to help make the decision that should be made.
You will have that opportunity. Okay, Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson?
Hi. Todd Wilson, 130 Manor Circle in Orno. Hello, Mayor Hunt and members. Water's a passionate topic tonight, and I'm here to talk about water too, but a very different aspect of it. I'm a rowing coach, and we, I was contacted by a group of parents who have some student athletes that are very good athletes, and are being pursued by Division I schools for rowing scholarships. And I was asked if I would coach these kids, and I said I would be honored to. We have identified Whale Tail as a superb lake for rowing. We, right now, are a group of five, and we meet very informally, and I train the kids early in the morning, now that they're out of school. Starting this next week will be early in the morning. So they come between about 7:30 and 8:30, are there and gone, make no noise. For us to become a little bit more formal, it's required by the Hennepin County Sheriff's Department to get a permit to have what they consider an organized event on the lake. As I look at the permit, it looks like it's more for like a one-day regatta event, but they want us to have it since we're going to be there, we hope to be there on a daily basis in the morning. Part of the permit is that it asks that the city, from which the activity begins and ends, write a letter of blessing just saying that we're welcome to be in the city and be on the lake, and that's what keeps us from being more organized. I hope that the city would see us as bringing an enhancement to your city. Rowing is booming. The head of the Charles Regatta in Boston had 9,000 competitors and 200,000 onlookers last year. It's a beautiful fall spectacle. My kids will go to Division I schools, and will likely row on the newest national team, and they need to continue to train. So we ask you just to simply write a letter to give us a chance to be on Whale Tail, and we're very flexible with our time. At times, we have identified early morning as probably the least innocuous to anybody, except somebody maybe having a cup of coffee on their deck might see us go by in what looks like an effortless motion, but it's actually taking a lot of energy to move the shell so quickly. Does anybody have any questions about rowing or shells or anything? Do I have time for questions?
This is really a comment of time.
A comment, okay, yeah, yeah.
And then Mr. Barone is going to address it in his staff report.
Okay.
And, yeah, so we'll bring it back later in the meeting.
I have invited a couple of the parents of my rowers to come and speak, and just let you know what it means to be a parent of a rower in this great sport that offers huge opportunities for scholarship to students. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Wilson.
I hope you can get your water problems sorted out.
Yeah, great.
Okay, Carrie Schreier. Is that right, Schreier?
Schreier. Hi. I am Carrie Schreier. I live in Chaska, and my daughter is being coached in rowing with Todd. And I, we are actually very happy with Whale Tail. It's much closer for us to get there, and it's a beautiful, peaceful lake and a very welcoming community. The Gale Woods Farm community seems to enjoy having us there, and so they're very happy there. As far as the benefits that the students get, as far as college goes, there's more college rowing opportunities than there are high school rowers. And so it's, if a high schooler rows, they go to college and row, and they get scholarships, and they have a great experience in college. And so it's just a wonderful opportunity for these youth. And now, here in Minutrista, it's opening up a new, new market of youth, because most, Ian Prairie has a rowing club, there's, the northern suburbs have rowing clubs, and the cities have rowing clubs, but there's nothing out here in the south of Minnetonka, where Chaska, Chan, Minnetonka, Waconia, Minutrista, all these areas, we can draw more youth from, and they can benefit as well. So anyway, I would love it if you could give, give us the opportunity to train on Whale Tail. It would be a great experience for all the youth, and I think it would be a good opportunity for Minutrista to have such a club in your city. So I hope you'll help us out.
Thank you. Jane Norling.
Jane Norling, 5450 Ridgewood Cove. I want to thank Mr. Avens for being willing to serve on the council, but I have to point out to the council and to Mr. Beatty that Mr. Avens was seated with the council during the work session that started at 5:30. He, his name was displayed. He very actively participated in questioning a potential new city contractor, all before he was sworn into office and before the appropriate paperwork was signed. I would like to support prior speakers on asking you to continue to consider on the water treatment plant more flexibility in the plan, not building, deciding to bail out to 2030 right now. Something that none of you have been bringing up at all is the fact that many people in the Met Council are very concerned about the, most of the cities in the western suburbs here are drawing their water from one main aquifer to three in total, what I'm hearing. If one of, if the main aquifer becomes damaged, overused, contaminated, everybody's water systems out here are going to be much, much affected. Unless you're planning on shuttling water back and forth all around the city, multiple locations might be a very good plan for the future, especially what we've seen just this past weekend on sewage, actually running into our major water systems. The last item is, when you were talking about having the open house coming up, maybe June 18th, we appreciate that very much, but the comment was made that the public was more concerned about the cost and not to confuse them with too many options. The main option we want to hear that you are not giving us is the choice of a vendor. We still want to know why WSB was, the plan was that was already approved, was thrown out. Bolton &amp; Mink has gone through both the value engineering and the design phase with, yes, a request for proposal was put out, but I read to you last time on how many companies didn't even feel it was worth their time to respond to it. Bolton &amp; Mink is not known as one of the less costly firms. There are known family ties between Bolton &amp; Mink, Wigan Water. There is a history of the design specs being so written that only Wigan Water equipment can fill those design specs. This is not transparency. This is conflict of interest. And those are the questions we'd like to see in the open meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Norling.
Thank you.
Okay, George Golsel.
George Golsel, 1635 County Road 110 North. I have a little bit of history. I've been a resident of Minutrista for 47 years, and it's going to be 47 years, because I'm going to move. I remember when I first came out here, the city council then wasn't able to get their ducks on the line and get a request in to get sewer money from LBJ back there, so the, it was one of the, I think, one of the oldest cities in the area in here where the residents had to pay for the sewer assessments, but anyway, they could have got money from the thing. Some of the other troubles, the mayors, I remember the one mayor got caught taking license tabs off somebody else's car, and he resigned. I remember a woman here that was in charge had our roads gravelled with recycled concrete that had metal in it, and we had the summer where we had about several hundred flat tires. And now we got the current mayor and the council, none of you were here, and when we had voted for the police station, we were supposed to all have, given the choice to vote in the thing, and it gives me pleasure to see none of them here. Just do the best you can. You're going to get some negative people, but just try to work through it. You guys got common sense? Do what you think is right. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Golsel. Rick Wybel. Welcome, Mayor, our next-door neighbor.
Thank you. Probably the only one that doesn't really have a dog in the race, other than a couple comments here. First, want to extend my thanks to your police chief and the department. Great work. First, want to extend my thanks to your police chief and the department, great work. Over the last year, we've had nothing but positive comments from the police department. Day in and day out, they're doing exactly what we've requested over the years. It's really about community, really having the value and the interest of our residents at hand and the active patrol, and it's phenomenal, especially as a business owner in Mound. It's a complete difference night and day between the police departments and just kind of how they operate. And since we're more community-based, city compared to Mound, it's really appreciated, and there's more of that interaction with the kids on the street. But also wanted to give the Minnetrista Council kind of an update as to where we're at on Glacier Road. Just like politics, things change. I'm a mayor that kind of looked at that Glacier Road barricade between Minnetrista and St. Boniface and just kind of looked at it over the years of public service, 12 years, and just kind of looked at it, why do we have this barricade? You know, and the original intent of the barricade, when Hunter's Crest was put in, the original development said that there was going to be a golf course there. And so, there was, the barricade was to come down after construction. But then, once the developer had changed Hunter's Crest to pull the golf course out and put in more houses, then an agreement in 2001 was put in place to basically say that two of the, two of the three barricades would come down, but the one on Park, or the one on Glacier would stay. So the other two barricades have come down because the threshold of the 80% build-out of the houses has been accomplished, but the one via contract will stay in place. And in my talks with the previous mayor, Cheryl Fisher, when we used to have our Wednesday morning talks between the city administrator and the mayors after the discussion between the two councils on how we could work better together, after a discussion on consolidation, which is the whole broad spectrum of, do we just work together like we do today between our police and fire very well? And how can we expand that to include other services across the board to be able to share information? Since we share so many of the same things, no matter what we do for water, we're going to be in the same aquifer. That aquifer that you talk about literally covers a huge area of the state, runs from St. Cloud all the way down to Rochester. It serves well over 1.2 million people. So it's an asset that we do have to talk about, but we'll talk about that later. Then, there's been talks every single year on the St. Bonnie side, whether we keep it open or keep it closed on the barricade. And there were, at one point, enough council members on the St. Bonnie side, three of them, that were questioning whether or not the barricade should come down. So we got into official talks with Minnetrista. I told Ann, maybe we should, you know, look at taking it down. Well, since those discussions, we've had two major events in St. Bonnie. Sorry, I'm going over.
Yeah, you're over.
We had a petition of residents that said, please don't shut down, so our council has to back those homeowners, and so at this point, we have to honor the request as a representative of government.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Wyble. Thank you for giving us that update. Casey Rasmussen.
Hello, Mayor, Councilman. I'm here also on water as part of the rowing group. My daughter has been rowing with Todd now for almost a year, had never rowed a day in her life. A friend told her it would be a fun thing to do, and now she's being recruited by Division One schools. She's a very serious academic and has had all sorts of opportunities open up to her through Todd's tutelage and coaching. We're really a very small group. We were part, some of us were part of a group that was in Long Lake and still is continuing on in Long Lake, but has chosen to go to a more participatory model where everybody rows no matter what, and they all show up, which is lovely, and we're very supportive of that. However, there's a small group of kids that this is what they want to do. You know, they've got their eyes on the Olympics, they've got their eyes on the national team, this is their life, and so the participatory model is, was just not really working for them. Todd agreed to continue to coach these kids, and so now we're looking for a good home, a lovely lake, and in looking at all the lakes around, came across Whale Tail. I was familiar with it because I live right over the border in Orno, and I tell you, we, my four children and I have spent so much time out at Gale Woods and at the Big Stone Mini Golf, which I have to say hats off. Both of those places are just crown jewels in the entire metropolitan area. And so, being familiar with this, you know, when we heard about Whale Tail, we came out to look. The girls have been out there rowing, they love it. It's really a peaceful, lovely lake, and it's a peaceful, lovely sport. You know, they're quiet, they're out there in the morning, you know, as Todd said, someone having coffee early may see them go by, but really, that's all there is to it, you know? There's no blowhorns, there's no shouting, everything is very, very quiet, and it's a peaceful sport, and it's part of what they really love, is that meditation piece of it. So we would just really, again, request that you support our ability to continue to row and the girls to continue to train. You know, the hours, really, we can get you out there pretty early. You know, my girls have been out there as early as 5:30 in the morning, some mornings. When the sun's up, they're ready to row, so that we've got some flexibility there, too. And even the name of the club, you know, it could be the Minnetrista Rowing Club. We're very open to that. Again, we're a very small group. We don't expect to get to be a huge group because, again, it's very competitive, and there are plenty of other participatory programs here in town for kids that are just interested in trying it out. You know, there's no question, if you're, you know, checking with other towns, you know, our coach is a little controversial. You know, like a lot, if anyone follows sports, a lot of the most competitive coaches are. And that's what I would say about Todd. He has been a phenomenal example for my daughter. He has been nothing but upright and upfront with everything, and we couldn't be more happy with his coaching and the model that he provides, my kids, so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. We're going to have a special presentation of our 2014 quarterly financial update.
Madam Mayor and Council, I'll try to keep this brief. I think it's pretty much just a report, it's attached, starting on page four in your packet, and I'll try to pretty much just hit the high points. We just had the audit presentation at the last meeting, so that was for, obviously, year-end, December 2013, and, you know, everything came out in good shape financially, so I just wanted to give a report now that we're turning to the current year and the future with the 2015 budget process starting around the corner here, too. So what's attached is same as previous reports. It's actually through, I ran it through April of 2014, the most recent completed month, I guess, you know, May was just wrapping up last week, so, and I'll pretty much just hit the highlights in the memo, and then if anyone has any questions. On the revenue report, at this point in the year, we're always going to be down in that seven, eight percent, because, you know, basically 80% of our general fund revenues are, give or take, are property taxes, and we won't have that till end of June and July here. So, you know, revenues are, you know, you can't pretty much just take it in a quarter, 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 you know, it's, it's pretty, we'll know a lot more once June and July, but some of our other revenues, like building permits and our tracking, that's, you know, one of our other bigger revenues in the general fund, and that's tracking about where we thought, maybe even a little above projections at this point in the year, especially with the late spring because of the rains and such. So the expenditure report then is the next, several pages after that, and right now, through April, we're about at 33% of our year-to-date expenditures, which is where you'd expect to be about four months in the year, basically about a third into our budget. So, you know, everything's tracking well there. There's some, some things we've paid through the first half of the year, like our fire contracts and such, some things we're still looking, waiting for a bill on, like our assessing services, so, but everything's pretty much tracking where we thought. Otherwise, our April cash and investments, that's the last report that's attached there on, page there, and, let's see, page, 12, I'm sorry, yeah, thank you. And the only thing I'll note there, I mean, everything is tracking fine there. The couple funds that have deficits are the, a couple of the funds where we just haven't received our first half tax, so basically our mound, fire, the portion we pay there, and as well as our EDA lease revenue bond, but it's, that's similar to previous years as far as, and just once we get that tax revenue in, we've made our debt service payments for the first part of the year, so. Otherwise, the only other thing I'll mention on the cash report is the capital projects for the Roundabout and Kings Point Road are still being finished this year, so that's where you'll see in the capital project funds, Fund 497, 498, there's still balances there, but that, most of that's, you know, unspent bond proceeds from last year, that just, I mean, just wasn't, it was, I mean, it was planned to not be able to be finished with Kings Point Road, and stuff in the Roundabout has some of the more aesthetics or some of the trail, I think, or some of the different things, so. Otherwise, I don't know if anyone has any questions on the individual reports that are attached from the review, but I just wanted to give that update, to show that as we go into the 2014, 2015 budget process that we are, we're tracking well for the first part of 2014 here. And probably the only other question I would have, if, depending on if anyone has questions on the reports, is if there's anything that, as we start to talk, as city staff on the 2015 budget, if there's any real high priorities or things we should be researching or looking into as we, as we start that process, so.
Well, I think one of the things is the pavement management plan. We've been kind of waiting on that.
Sure. Yep, and I've talked with Paul and engineering staff on how the priority that is, and the plan is to bring that to the next work session if possible, so.
Great.
I think, yeah, it's going to be a cornerstone or a big piece of the next, of the 2015 budget.
Anything else, Council, that you want to prioritize for budgeting? Any questions about the report? Would you like us to make a motion to accept it?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, if you want to just accept some of the financial report that's presented.
I'll make a motion to accept the financial report as presented.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's five oh. Okay, now we're moving to the consent agenda, and we polled the meeting minutes for May 5th, May 19th, both the special and the regular meeting. So that leaves the, to approve the conditional offer of employment for Michael Walken and to approve the full-time status for Erin Rasset in Public Works. So, any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda with the ABC removed.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five oh. Okay, now I'll open the public hearing for vacating drainage and utility easements at 950 County Road 110 North. Public meeting is open. Public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. Pursuant to state statute, the city council has the authority to vacate existing drainage and utility easements by request. This is involving the property at 950 County Road 110, formerly known as the Wallace Property, and is involving a future agenda item this evening, the Orchard Cove Platte. There are some sanitary sewer lines that go over that property that are not in the proper location, given the new development that's going in. So by vacating them, it'll allow the development to put in the new sewer lines that will go to the lift station in the northwest portion of the property, and then the new sewer lines and water lines in the development will all be in public right-of-way. So that is the agenda item we're looking for action on from the council this evening.
Okay. Should I ask anyone who wants to speak? Does anybody want to speak on this issue? Okay, can I close? The public hearing, Council? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, yeah, your computer's dead. I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution, vacating the drainage and utility easement at 950 County Road 110 North.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's five oh. Okay, business items, Orchard Cove final platte. David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. The slide on the screen gives a timeline overview of where we started and how we got to the point where we are this evening with the platte that is now known as the Orchard Cove Platte. Started back in October of 2013 with the concept sketch plan, and you can see the different public meetings in which this, this application has gone through. That's including the Lake Minnetonka Conservation District dates, where they did review a multiple dock license for this development. What, the first item on your agenda regarding the Orchard Cove Platte, and there is the platte as it's been presented to the city council, the first item would be for action from the city council, looking at the final platte for approval. What city staff looks for when a final platte is submitted is consistency, first and foremost, with their preliminary platte application, secondly, with the conditions that were approved as part of that preliminary platte. Staff has found that their submittal is consistent with the preliminary platte approval and conditions, and would be looking for council. The recommendation from staff is that council approves the final platte as presented with the conditions that are outlined in the resolution as part of your packet this evening.
Any questions?
I take it, Ron, you've looked through this and everything in order.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Council. There is a develop, as David said, we've reviewed the platte. There is a small title issue that will yet to be worked out. The development agreement is also in your packet. The resolution that you're being asked to pursue gives the city attorney, well, commits the developer to complying with the title issues as determined by the city attorney. So that allows us the flexibility to work out minor items, and it's not atypical for that to be the case. The development agreement is largely complete, all the substantive items are complete, but as you probably noticed, there is a, there's an exhibit or two yet to be added, and that's, again, fairly typical.
Thank you.
Council?
So before we do the motion, can I ask the attorney, did you want to have three separate motions for those items?
Yes. Okay, yeah, I would, I would suggest that we follow the agenda.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion, because I'm the only one that doesn't seem to be having technical issues.
I can't get on.
I'll make a motion to approve the final platte approval for Orchard Cove, number I. I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's five oh. I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision agreement.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. And I'll make a motion for the waiver of architectural guidelines for the platte of Orchard Cove. I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's five oh. Our next business item is establishing a policy for sign retro-reflectivity assessment and management. Take it away.
Good evening, Mayor and Members of the Council. I should note before I get started that the items are identified in this policy have been performed by your Public Works Department. The signed inventory has been done, and they've been moving forward with replacement of the requirements, required signs. The FHWA has handed down to the states, which has handed down to the counties and cities and the townships, a mandate to have a management, an assessment and management program, and this is so nationwide, that would assess signs and replace especially regulatory signs for the retro-reflectivity. So when you come up on a sign, does it reflect back to you, can you see what it is, especially at night? So the city has gone through that process, and in your packet is a resolution in the form of a policy that I have had Public Works review, and I also know that we do currently budget, I believe it's between $3,000 and $5,000 annually to replace signs. This formalizes that process, and we recommend that you adopt that policy. My motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the policy, because I can't read it, I can't get to it. I don't know. Mike, do you got any ideas? I can't.
The policy was from the League of Minnesota.
The, I should mention that this policy was modified from the model organs that the League of Minnesota cities prepared for the cities to utilize, and we recommend that your motion include passing a resolution establishing a policy for sign retro-reflectivity assessment management to meet the FHWA requirements and formalize the actions.
Okay.
And that you just, that would just be the way this motion would be stated, if you'd like to make that.
So, so.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. And next is to authorize the interim city administrator to enter into a temporary agreement between June 3rd, 2014 through June 16, 2014, for building official services. And I'd like to clarify at this time that when we have work sessions, we don't take votes. So that is why Mr. Abens was able to sit up here, it's perfectly okay to do that. I don't know why you think it isn't, but it is, because we didn't take action. Now we're at the city council meeting, this is where we take action, just to clarify your concerns. concerns about that. So I will let you take over.
Uh, yes, uh, Mayor and council, just as we discussed in the, um, work session this evening that began at five thirty, we had, uh, two of the three, uh, vendors here and, uh, I don't know if we want to call them interviews, but we had discussions with, uh, options available to the city council knowing where we are cur, currently with our contract, um, both short-term and long-term with the city of Victoria. Victoria is not going to be able to any longer provide us with, uh, building inspection services and, um, from August 1st, uh, and beyond. And so that put us in a bit of a pickle as to what to do. So tonight, the work session, you had a chance to talk to, um, a couple of, uh, vendors, uh, through the work that, uh, David Abel provided. Um, and I think the consensus of the council was to, um, have me at this meeting, um, provide you with the, uh, opportunity to ask me to seek a temporary agreement with the, um, uh, Scott Qualley's group, Minspec, uh, in order to, um, try to work through the issues that we're currently facing, uh, even, uh, though our, our, our contract with, um, Victoria's is going to be ending shortly, they're even in a worse crunch and so are we, uh, because of the absence of their main building inspector due to an illness. So, this item will allow us to enter into an agreement with, uh, Mr. Qualley's group and, uh, I have already talked to him, uh, a little earlier this evening to say, just give me a call tomorrow, hopefully this item would pass tonight. And if so, um, we will do that and then subsequent to that, uh, we will bring back, um, an agreement with you, a more full agreement, um, to enter into, um, an agreement for those building inspection services for the next, uh, whatever year, year and four months, whatever it might be to get us to mid to late, uh, 2015. So, um, with that authorization, with a vote tonight, I can begin that work tomorrow.
Counsel?
You need a motion?
I need a motion.
I'll motion to authorize interim city administrator, Mike Veroni, to enter into a temporary agreement between June 3rd, 2014 and June 16th, 2014 for building official services with Minspec.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's five oh. Now, uh, the next item was, uh, a letter that I had prepared to comment on the Thrive MSP, um, plan, which has since been passed, um, but I would still like to have, uh, my comments put on the record and I think all of you have had a chance to see them. Uh, do you have any, have they been in packets, so most of you who have packets have also seen it. Um, I, for the sake of time, uh, I, I'm not gonna read it, um, but, um, did anybody have any additions, changes before I send it out?
Looks fine.
Okay, so I'll put that for the record. Okay. Um, so then our next item is administrative items, approving claims.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims as presented.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, I have a few items under council reports. We're going to have an emergency meeting on Wednesday at six o'clock for the LMCD to discuss having a no-wake zone across the entire lake. The lake is at record high levels, uh, there's a lot of debris, um, and other items floating in the lake at the moment. Um, dock sections have gotten loose and it's, it's causing quite a, a problem. So, um, so we're gonna do that Wednesday at six o'clock and I will get back to, um, what happens there. Um, I have a public safety meeting also, uh, under the LMCD, I serve on the public safety committee. That will be June 12th at three o'clock and, um, we are also going to talk about enforcing, uh, we've had quite a problem, there has been a high water emergency already declared. People are having a hard time understanding where there is a no-wake zone and where there isn't a no-wake zone, so we're going to talk with the power squadron about how we can, how it have people understand where, where it is no-wake and where it isn't no-wake 'cause it's somewhat confusing for the average boater. So, that's my update, um, Mark?
Uh, I have none.
I have no reports.
I just have one, a question more or less for, uh, Mike. Uh, prior to this, or shortly after the last council meeting, I've had a couple of discussions with the president of West Tonka Community Commerce, Kelly, and, and in looking through the website, she had requested that the WCC, West Tonka Community Commerce could be added to our website. Is there a change or what's our position?
Well, in general, I did talk with Terry Harstead, our clerk, and she manages our website. Um, in general, we really haven't opened up, um, our website to, um, nonprofits and things of that nature. Um, it's, it can be a little bit of a slippery slope. I mean, if you want to have WCC on, I understand their organization, it's a great organization, I have no issue with it, but, you know, we're gonna put up stuff for Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and stuff like that. So, that's the only reason that we've really hesitated with that, um, in, in the past. So, I mean, it's something we can certainly look at as a policy thing if we want it down the road. Um, like, uh, as we talked, uh, I think it was last week, a council member, yeah, it's a great organization and we, it's, no offense to them and why we don't, but we just, as a rule, haven't done it and it's mostly because of, you know, once you open it up to them, you're opening up to everything, so, so, but we can certainly look at that.
I think it's a fantastic organization, but I wanted to throw that out to see what the thought was on that. And then the other thing is, in terms of the upcoming Spirit of the Lakes, July 17th, 18th, 19th, uh, with the Spirit of the Lakes, from a city standpoint, uh, are we gonna have any participation with that?
That's a good question.
Either from, either from a sponsorship or, or part, or part of Spirit of the Lakes?
I, I wish I could give you a, a good answer on that, I just don't know. I don't know what our, our work.
Do you have some ideas?
Generally never done that in the past, if I'm correct.
Well, in the past, uh, didn't, last year, Chief Falls, you, you wrote in it, didn't you write in it last year in the parade?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, uh, for the last, uh, two or three years, uh, we have, uh, tried to have a squad car and then the mayor, uh, Mayor Fisher, former Mayor Fisher, uh, partook in that, rode in the squad car as well and that was at her request. Um, so that's something we have done, I guess, on and off over the years.
I would like to think that, uh, somehow we would participate in the Spirit of the Lakes being so close to one of the activities that take place, uh, between the two cities. Uh, I think it would be kind of important to somehow be involved, either whether it be a partition, participate in the parade, our business showcase booth or something.
Yeah, something's been interesting.
I think we need to look at, and that's coming up July 17th, I think it is 18th and 19th.
Well, I think we should ask our residents if there's, if they have any ideas of how we could participate.
I think a question. How does St. Bonnie, do you participate?
Not officially.
Or, or?
And the ebbs and flows, whether they request, uh, me to participate in one of the flows and when they request, usually I will, if they don't, then I.
I think, uh, Ms. Mayor Wybo, I think St. Bonnie, they have their fire engines and there's fire trucks to participate.
Correct, it's, uh, usually after requests of Spirit of the Lakes, but not officially from the city.
Okay, but I know you participated.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, Mike?
Yeah, I have a, a couple of items, um, just to talk a little bit about, um, the orientation sessions that we held last week, uh, with, uh, our newest council member Tyler Abins, we hosted some orientation sessions on, uh, May 28th and May 29th and we scheduled some meetings between Tyler, one-on-one with our department directors and then, uh, with myself at the end. Um, worked really well, we were able to get through a lot of materials. I know it's not quite, uh, um, as long as we probably would have liked it to be, you know, he's just gonna have to learn on the run, I'm sure he'll be able to, so, um, but we thought we'd, uh, at least give him the basics and, uh, just allow him a chance to get to meet us and, and us to meet him and so, I thought it worked out pretty well. Um, I just want to follow up also on the scenic byway thing that, uh, council member Christians asked about. Now, the information I have is from, trying to find it as I speak here, um, I think from May 22nd, so it's a week and a half, two weeks old, but I believe seven of the fourteen cities were fully behind the scenic byway thing, including us. And there were a number of cities that we weren't able to get an answer from. I think there was maybe one, possibly two, that were kinda on the fence about doing it, so, in general, I think we're, we're not alone. I think our participation was, was, is pretty well and if you would like, we could follow up and find out from those other cities, but, okay. Um, and I think, uh, before I talk a little bit about the rowing issue, we should probably, maybe by motion, um, set the open house for the water thing, um, for Wednesday, June 18th from six to eight p.m. at the, um, police station, so.
Yes.
We'll do that here in a second. Um, just want to talk a little bit about the, uh, rowing thing. I did have a chance last week to talk with, um, Todd Wilson and I know he brought a couple of the, uh, parents of the people and initially when I spoke to him, I, I didn't have, it sounds like a, a great idea to have, uh, these rowers here, um, on Whale Tail Lake. Uh, but, uh, when I did a Google search, I did find some information out there about his association with the Long Lake Rowing Club. I know he's no longer there, um, and then even one of the parents said tonight, he's a little bit controversial, uh, I'm not sure if that's the case, but that's what she said. Um, and then there was an article in the Laker just this past week on Friday on the inside cover about how, I don't know if it was Orno, you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong, Todd, but they weren't going to add a second group and so, so, uh, instead of me just unilaterally saying, sure, go ahead, I thought I would let you guys, since it's, uh, your city, uh, you got elected to make decisions like that, at least let them come. I told Todd, you know, if you want to come and talk to the council during the work session, which he did, and they're patiently waiting here to hear what you have to say, so, uh, I did send an email to the mayor to kind of inform her, 'cause I think she did get solicited by one of the parents that are here tonight, uh, wondering if we could support it and in, in concept, it sounds great, but I thought I'd let you guys make that decision versus me just making that decision, so.
I'm sorry, what was the controversy?
I don't know, we'll let them explain it, so.
Well, I, I just want to say, I, I only found out about this about, what, ten o'clock last night?
Yeah, okay.
Uh, it was the first I heard about it and, yeah, I, I think that, um, rowing is a great sport. I guess I would like to see some input from our residents who live on Whale Tail. I wouldn't want to make this decision without hearing what they have to say, um, and, you know, I know that time is of the essence for them.
Sure.
But again, I only heard about it last night and I'd like to hear from our residents as to what they think about it. I think rowing is a fabulous sport, but, well, I think we have to get our ducks in a row and make sure that all of our residents are okay with it and, does he fill out a permit? What is the process?
Well, he has a couple of things I think you need, and if, I don't know if you want to go to the podium, Todd, to maybe answer some of these questions. I know he's, it looks as if it's a, for a single event, but maybe because the sheriff's department doesn't really quite have the form they need, but he's, he's already discussed with, uh, Hennepin County Sheriff Water Patrol and so they're on board. I did get an email today from, uh, Three Rivers Park District and it had to do with where they're going to store their, their, um, their boats, out of lack of a better phrase, um, uh, their rowing boats, um, at the, um, park over here, um, the Gale Woods Park. Um, there's basically no issue as far as Three Rivers Park is concerned.
Okay.
They have plenty of space for them to put the, the, uh, boats as they currently have it. Um, if there is going to be competition, let's say there's ten other people, I'll send, say, hey, I want to, uh, put my boat there too, then they'll conduct a lottery, but they haven't really ever had to do that. And so, they're, they're pretty much fine with, uh, Todd and his group of having their boat storage there in the Gale Woods. I mean, it's open to anybody and it, it rarely gets used and so, they would be using what's the facilities that are there, so, from that standpoint, I don't think there's really any issue, um, so, but again, if your concern is what, what.
Well, I, I would like to hear from people who live on Whale Tail. Just, I think that, that's part of the due diligence. I know it, the timing doesn't work great for you, but I, I do think we have to give them an opportunity, so, can we schedule it for our next meeting to put it on the agenda?
Sure.
And, um, can we notify the, uh, all, you know, lakeshore owners around Whale Tail? And they don't have to come in if they don't want to, if they just want to send in emails with what they think, that's fine too. And do you want to be their contact point?
Yeah, we'll figure it out between staff, who's gonna head that up, but, uh, we will, we will send something to them. I'm sure it's not gonna be a, a large number of, of property owners, but we'll figure out what that is.
Okay, and our next meeting is at June 16th?
Correct.
Yeah, so we'll, it'll be on the June 16th agenda, that'll give our residents an opportunity. Do you guys have any other concerns?
No, no, I think it's covered.
Okay. Any other questions?
Questions? Anybody ever rowed before? Ever seen these beautiful sleek crafts?
Yes.
Just to give you an idea how big they are, a, a single boat is twenty-six or feet or about eight meters long for just one person and we have boats for single, for one person, two persons, four persons and, and eight, actually nine. And the, the nine-person boat, we actually pulled a water ski with last year, give you an idea how fast and how powerful nine people can be. It's very fun. Quietly, mind you.
Okay.
The horses are very quiet in the group, so, yeah. The, 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 Long Lake, I went to Long Lake's council meeting to discuss allowing us and their feeling was they didn't want two groups on the lake, they're worried about too many people being there and, I mean, it's, it, but five thirty, six thirty in the morning, there aren't many people out there, but nonetheless, we respected that and we came and find a, found a better, what I consider a much better lake, that you don't have the water ski, wakeboard traffic, that Long Lake is a very busy lake, motorboat-wise, so, and it's, it's lovely. We've, we've found that the kids are, when we launch from Gale Woods, they can very happily just stay in Dexter most days and sometimes they have a long workout and they'll just sort of meander along the shoreline all the way around, so, they're basically out of sight and they're quiet and I've told them to be very respectful of the fishermen and try to herd the fish towards the fishermen.
I'm sure they'd appreciate that. Great.
So, any, any other thing? Anything else I can?
Okay, thank you and we'll bring that back to our next meeting.
Okay, so we'll see you on June 16th.
Yep.
Correct. And then.
Oh, yeah, then I was gonna say, I think just, you know.
Just a motion for the open house on the 18th of June.
Oh, I make a motion to set June 18th on Wednesday, I believe you said at six to eight, at the police facility, um, for the, um, open house for the water treatment and I encourage everyone to come out, I, I, they're going to put on sort of an open house format and you'll get to learn about all the different water treatment, um, methodologies and costs and, uh, ask questions. And there'll be people there to answer your questions.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. Okay, and then, um.
I don't have anything else, I think that's all I have.
Any other staff report? Well, Paul is gonna give us an update on Enchanted Lane.
Well, as we all know, there is some flooding going on on Enchanted. Um, I have placed, uh, some correspondence out to the Corps of Engineers, the DNR, uh, and also copy the watershed district down. I want to get their, make sure we follow the correct protocol for a temporary fill and in the meantime, look at a, um, potentially look down the road at a permanent solution. Um, I think one gentleman indicated that this is happening more often and I believe Public Works also echoed that same feeling. Uh, right now, the, uh, water's about a foot deep, maybe a little deeper than that. Um, Public Works was out on Sunday filling holes, I believe they were filling sandbags with clear rock and putting them in the holes and we did, I did go out there with Gary today and he had to replace some of those bags. Um, he laughed at me on one question, I asked him if he had a no-wake zone sign.
[laughing]
And I, it's, it sounds funny, but, yeah, I saw a person in a suburban go by that must have been trying to go thirty miles an hour.
Yeah.
Not very respectful of the people who live there.
Right.
It's incredible someone would do that. Um, but waves are lapping up with people's garage doors, I think there's one garage door that is under, or water is, is been sandbagged. Um, looking at a temporary solution, there are some difficulties with that. We're not gonna be able to get water efficiently from one side of the temporary roadway to the other, but looking, providing the access to the other residents of the island, we also have the city of Shorewood has a number of residents out there, we need to get that road raised, so, we are working on that and I can give you updates as time goes by through email.
I did speak to Scott Zerby, mayor of Shorewood, last week and they said they were gonna see where it is on their payment management plan, I think we talked and, uh, but that's, we've had issues out there, it's, it's a tough situation because it is in a wetland, basically, the road's in a wetland. Um, but I thought we had had a couple of ideas a few years ago and then I never heard any more about it.
We came up with a couple of them and I've, I've heard of things that did not work We came up with a couple of them, and I've, I've heard of things that did not work well. So I'm going to go back to our staff about coming up with a temporary solution that'll work better than that. Something that you can put in and then take back out without, I'm not going to say easily, without trying to reduce some of the issues that have occurred in the past.
Yeah, and I was out there yesterday, and I'm going to thank Chief Falls for your community service officers that were out there, making sure people didn't come to blows going through the water. I heard there were a few fights.
There were, there were a few issues, but the concern was just the, at the rate that people were traveling through there. So just trying to get people to slow down and take turns, so one car at a time would pass through there seemed to help, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay.
How big a distance?
Well, in Minatrista, there's two areas. One of them, I think, is more than 100 yards in length. Another one, I think, is a little shorter than that. But the water is deep. I believe there's a gentleman out there with a Ford Mustang. I think the water would have been over the rocker panels in that vehicle, and-
Mine's yours.
I thought that might be, it was out there with flat tires, so I think it's a little too deep for that type of a vehicle. I mean, it's almost to the point where we need a truck to go through there.
Yeah. Well, they say six inches is dangerous.
And also, just a shout out to our Public Works guys. They, they've been putting in lots of hours there here late Friday. I don't know if they're here Saturday, but I do know they were here yesterday, so, and they're back out again.
I wonder if you score that, my wife and I, that your Public Works people have been wonderful, and attention to safety and responsiveness.
Yeah, yeah, they're a great group.
Do we have any signs, slow signs? Because I know, I was out there yesterday, and must have been one of your neighbors, I was just going along, measuring it a little bit, and he said, well, thank you for going slow. And I jokingly said, yeah, we need a no-wake sign out here. And he laughed, and he said, you're surprised? Unbelievable how fast some people go through there, you know? So, do we have signage out there, do you know, or?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, there are, there is signage out there. I don't know, I don't believe there's any slow signs. There's water on roadway signs.
I saw that one.
And that signage is fairly limited, because they had to attach it to temporary items and try and get it off, off the roadway as best they could. But we can, that's another piece that I think we can look at, if this is going to be a recurring event as part of the mitigation process.
We also, Public Works has kind of put out flashers to mark the edge of the road, try to help delineate that. Unfortunately, you can't delineate a lot of the potholes. There are filling noises, or getting complaints. I know when I was riding with Gary, he stepped out into about a foot of water and put one back in a hole that must have gotten knocked out by some of the traffic going through the speed. Should also mention, it's been very taxing, I think, on Public Works this past weekend with all the rain. We've got, I think I spent, I don't know, I think I spent six hours in the truck with Public Works today, just going through and looking at some of the areas around the city. There's a lot of issues that have come up. Homeowners are very frustrated about some of them, especially those in low points. And we've gone out to talk to, at least the more critical ones, and tried to give them some guidance on what we can do, what we can't do. And there's going to be some more actions and potentially some projects come out that will, similar to the Hoffman case, that may arise out of this.
Have we heard anything from the Hoffman's since the rain?
Well, we do know that we can get in there temporarily and fix that ditch. The problem is, we can't get in there temporarily to fix that ditch because of the, how wet it is. We can't get equipment in there. So yes, we can get out there, so we, at least for a temporary fix, we can go ahead and do that. And we're, we'll be working on what your alternatives are for a permanent fix.
Anybody else?
I think that's all we have, Mayor.
Oh, one thing, which we, I had added to the agenda earlier. It was that correction. There seems to be some confusion as to who we were on the phone with when we came out of closed session. It was our HR attorney, Mick Walzberger, from Rupp Anderson Squires and Walzberger. And the, the question that he asked, which Mr. Kove had asked, is why, he asked who it was in the audience that was yelling, and, in shouting out. And so Chief Kove was, was acknowledged that that was the person that was yelling out from the audience. So if there were any questions about that, it was not Tom Notch, as Mr. Kove said. So I'd like that correction to the minutes.
Very good. Take care of it.
Okay. Anything else?
Before we close, I got a couple of comments.
Use the mic.
Sorry. There's been a lot of accusations being thrown around, unfounded accusations by a lot of people, and I just kind of blew them off, because people do that, unfortunately. But I, I heard a good one the other day, and I thought, you know, now it's getting out of control. Apparently, somebody has put on either a website or a blog that Ann Hunt and her husband, Bob, are selling their property to the city of Minatrista for a water treatment plant. And if anybody has any idea where she lives, she lives in probably the only gated community in Minatrista, but probably some of the largest homes in the community, on 250 feet of the, some of the most pristine lakeshore on Lake Minnetonka. Where in the world does somebody come up with something like this? This is nuts. This started out to be, our residents came to us and said, please fix our water. And this is where we've gotten to. It's a sad day in this city. It's getting to the point where my family have been here, my great-grandfather was one of them that started this city in the late 1800s. If that man's looking down, he's shaking his head going, this is not what I started. This is pathetic. If you have, people have accusations and have evidence that anyone on this council has done anything, then do something about it. Don't stand here and, and put it on blogs that we were criminals, we're corrupt. All we're trying to do is fix the water. The people have been after the city for years, and that's one thing I've talked to people. Have you been talking to the city for, you know, is this just something that started? And they said, no, we've been complaining for years, and nobody would do nothing about it. So we take this thing on, and this is what we get, to try and give people water where they turn their faucet on, that something comes out that doesn't look like rust or black mud. And that's what this is about. And it's also, it started like this. I've got something here that came from, there's a website out there, it says, fix our water now, Minatrista. I mean, so people are serious. They've taken some serious steps to do this. Now I've come to find out, I looked it up, what's happening is, they've turned this good thing into a political thing. I mean, one of the quotes off of this, and I encourage anybody that's listening, watching, here, to go to this website and see what has been said. It's been turned into a political statement. We've got, we, what have we got here? We said, we've got the pressure on them. We also need to focus on identifying and supporting three good candidates to run for the next council in November. What does that have to do with water? Can anybody tell me that? I mean, politics, that's fine, you can do it, but don't mix it up with trying to fix water. I mean, we take this for granted. I'm on a well, I've been there. I've been on a well my whole life. I've had some issues, but, you know, every time I turn the tap on, and my kids do, I mean, we've got people that are, that have infants that are trying to make bottled wat, or bottled formula, and they open their tap up, and the stuff that comes out that people just take for granted is not wa, it's, it doesn't look like water. You know, it may be safe to drink, but I wouldn't put up with that. Why, why would you? I mean, that's one of the core essential services that a city should provide. Police, fire, water, sewer. I mean, well, right, but, I mean, waters, water's right up there. You need water to live. I mean, what has happened to this city? Have any of us done anything wrong? I don't think so. I, you know, I'm not perfect. I don't know, you know? If I have, please come to me and say, you did this wrong. And whatever you got to do to me, do it to me. But to stand here and make up rumors and turn it political, that's not what Minatrista's about. Minatrista does not deserve this. The people in this city don't deserve this. And they're smart enough to figure out that this has turned into a circus. And it needs to end. If you want to keep your, if you want to sue us, if you want to file charges against us, go for it. I, I would, I would love if you did, because I want to know if I did something wrong. Like I say, I don't think I did anything wrong. Maybe I did, but then do it. Just get off your horse and do it. Because the people of this city are going to lose because of this, because of people doing this kind of stuff. All they want is their water fixed. And this is what it's come to. Like I say, I've lived here, I've got my family here, I'm almost getting to the point where I don't want to tell people that I live in Minatrista anymore. I went to two graduations and people brought it up. Somebody said, oh, you've got all these emails. And I said, yeah. Said, I got 20 of them. He said, that's a lot. And I said, well, it's over three and a half months. And he goes, what? And he's, I said, yeah, it's over three and a half months. He says, well, that's not what it said in the paper. I said, well, don't believe everything you say in the paper that you read. I said, so this is what's happening. People, they're getting part of the story. I had a conversation with Teresa the other day for about an hour and a half. Hopefully, we worked some of those things out, is we've had a quote in the paper that the council had communication, email communication for months about letting an employee go. I'm still waiting for those, those emails. And you said you would get them to me, right? So I'm still waiting for them. I didn't see any. Nobody, everybody keeps saying they're out there, they're out there. Well, show them to us. Do, do it. But let's, let's get that over with, so we can move on and give people what they deserve, simple, clean water. Because I am just disgusted with what's happened in this city. So that's all I'm going to say about it. Whatever people want to do, take away from this, take away from it. But if you're going to do something, just do it. Because I want to know where we stand on this thing. I think the people of this city deserve to know the truth. And the truth has not been a big part of this whole thing. It's been, how, how you can twist something that can be so good into something so bad, and the crazy part, most people that I've come across that are against this are non-city water. So why, why would, you don't have a, a dog in this race, so why would you even care? That's, that's the crazy part about it. We're trying to give people options here, every option possible. I mean, you know, people say, why do we need water treatment? Well, I don't know. St. Bonnie has water treatment, Oconia has water treatment, Mound is talking about it. Obviously, it's something that's going to have to happen here. Victoria just put one in. I mean, this is not something that we just dreamed up and said, hey, we're just going to spend a whole lot of money on this thing, because we just like spending other people's money. Well, that ain't it. That ain't it at all. Would, Rick, would you like to chime in on this?
It's an interesting conversation regarding water treatment, because St. Bonnie was asked about a year ago, what we do for water treatment. And we actually ran into issues after we put in a new well. And so we're a little bit ahead of the curve compared to Minatrista regarding water treatment, because we're in two different aquifers. And because of what St. Bonnie did, where we had to drill through one aquifer to get to another one to get into it deeper, the DNR has since passed a ruling that that will never happen again. So St. Bonnie has the last aquifer drilled through that will be allowed in the state. And that's what's caused some of the problems in Wiper Lake, where they're not going to be able to drill through aquifers, and that's where Minatrista is kind of looking at everything across the board. And even talking with Mayor Fisher at the time, they were, Minatrista was asking St. Bonnie if we had the capacity to provide a solution for the residents of Hunter's Crest. And it was during those meetings that we had discovered the problems that Minatrista was going through, such as one time that they had cleaned their water tower, there was six feet, six feet of iron deposits sitting in your water tower. We also learned that we had, over the years, worked together to create interconnects to be able to provide disaster recovery for each other's cities. But at the time that we were working on our water treatment facility last year, and Minatrista, unfortunately, at the same time, ran into a disaster that we were unable to help, even though we have three interconnects between the cities to provide that disaster recovery. So as part of that formation, and part of our talks last year, we need to work together, because this is not just a go-it-alone type of solution. So it was correct of both mayors to talk to me about, where is St. Bonnie at? What experiences have you had? And we, I did recommend at that time, because the question was asked by both mayors, who is your engineer? No disrespect to the current engineers, but we wanted to show Minatrista some of the things and how creative we were in trying to solve some of the problems that we've had. For example, the one well, the new one that we had put in, brought in magnes. The older wells, two of them had a problem with the screen to where it was failing all the time, and we had to rehabilitate it, and it still puts sand and iron into our systems. And the other aquifer that's clean, or sorry, the other well that's clean, still brings in a lot of iron, because it's the Mound's iron. So we get all of this in, and as soon as we put in the new well, the treatment that we were doing for the magnes, all of a sudden invalid all of the treatment that we were doing for iron. So we had to become creative with the help of Bolton and Mink, and create a temporary test system out in the middle of the street to do a one-day bypass, to literally sit there and try to figure out the formulation. And that was one of the things I had to explain. Now, we should be blessed that we have public officials across cities talking to each other. I'll tell you, when I first started in the city council role, open meeting violations scared me to death that I wouldn't want to talk to any other mayor. But I've got to tell you that there are sometimes mayor meetings across the county that we do get together and talk about different ideas. I also came to Trista Days just to kind of see what the latest was, and kind of see where you were at, and direction-wise. And it's always good for the cities to compare information, because even as neighboring cities, we share a police department. It might make sense for us to sometimes sit down and figure out whether or not simple things like our zoning ordinances should be somewhat similar, so that we have the same type of criminal policies that the police should be investigating, versus trying to remember two distinct ones and a little bit of variances. So those are helpful. Or even when we have building code policies, so that our fire department, when they're responding to fires in the future, can have the same type of processes going forward. So I, I feel honored that, from time to time, rarity, that Ann will give me a call and just kind of ask a poignant question. Most of them are personal, but, you know, sometimes, like, a few weeks ago, it was regarding, who do we use as a, an engineer? And have you had any problems with them in the past? We explain all of that. We even had joint meetings between the two cities, in the public, regarding consolidation. We agreed not to consolidate, but that we should still work together. And it's incumbent upon the residents, yes, ask questions, be involved. But I would also give you another piece of advice, and I've talked to you about this before, Ann, regarding your agenda. I think having your council meeting where you invite the public to come in and literally put you on your heels throughout the entire meeting without, in giving them just three minutes to discuss a point, early on in the agenda, that's not germane to a topic that you're actually getting to, I think you're getting flooded with too much information. At our council meetings, as a piece of advice, we actually go through each of the items of the agenda, and when we get to a specific piece, we'll ask if there's public input. So that way, everything's more germane. And I've discovered many times that the experts are out here in the audience, and sometimes they'll ask a good question that I haven't considered, and that way, it keeps it germane. If I was asked those questions in the beginning, just as all of you right now have laptops, I bet it was hard to take notes and to be able to remember that when you got to that agenda item. And this is kind of a rare meeting where some of your laptops failed, so you couldn't have written notes during that time unless you had a piece of paper next to you. So that's my recommendation, is I would look at that reform, because starting out negatively cannot put you in a good frame of mind. It would be better to parse out that agenda and allow public input throughout. And then if it's a new agenda item, those people can be heard under new business at the end. But the public generally would have time to talk to either the mayor or the city administrator ahead of time, before the council packets are released, to be able to have a specific point in time on the agenda. So that way, the staff has time to prepare, and so does the council for some of those larger pieces. And sometimes you just, under new business, may just have to hear that person and say, I'm sorry, we don't have enough information, let's put you on the next agenda, so that we can get more information. That's just mayor to mayor and council to council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Wyble.
Okay. Any other final thoughts?
Could I, I, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to Mayor Wyble for his input, and also, Mark, for you. It has gotten a little crazy. Some of the, I've had parents who have kids go to West Taca School District, that have